All right, the time is now six o'clock. So in the interest of everyone's time, we're going to get started. And we are going to be waiting on one candidate and we'll make sure that we escort them up there. Stephen Stein, hello everybody. My name is Michael Seagrist. I am the clerk here in Canton Township. I want to welcome everybody in the audience and thank you for your participation and being here. This is extremely important. I want to thank all of the candidates for taking the time to be here with us. And then I want to thank our partners as well. Ms. Kendra Byrd, the records and data specialist for my office, will be taking my position, moderating this evening. So I am just going to be welcoming everybody and then I will be saying thank you at the end. I'm going to leave it in her capable hands. Just briefly, we had the idea to do this forum as part of like the back of the ballot series because as most people do know, there's a substantial amount of drop off when people vote. The same people who vote for that first contest, which is the fun one that drives everybody to vote, don't always make it to the final race at the back. And sometimes there can be upwards of 10% drop off for folks. And as we all know, those decisions at the bottom of the ballot are sometimes the most important decisions that we make when casting our ballot. You are also more likely, your vote is more likely to impact who gets elected the further down the ballot you go. That's why we're here today. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Ms. Kendra Byrd. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to thank everyone for coming and participating in this forum. We appreciate you being actively involved in the community. My name is Kendra Byrd. As he stated, I am the records and data specialist for the Canton Township Clerk's Office. I had to say that slowly. I wanted to, I'm going to give you a format for tonight's evening, but first off, I want to introduce my, our partners for tonight's event. To my immediate right, she, her name is Karen Braxton. She is the social action chair for Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Inkster Chapter. We appreciate her being here. And to her immediate right is Mr. Marvin Franklin, who is the educational committee chair for the Western Wayne County NAACP. I too also want to thank our esteemed candidates who are sitting up front. So thank you. The format for tonight's evening is all candidates will have two minutes to introduce themselves. One minute to answer a question, rotating alphabetically every question, and two minutes to conclude the forum. Depending on how we're doing on time, we have question cards that will be passed out for you all to fill out and give to our clerk's office staff in the very back. We will be notifying everyone that there is, when there is 15 seconds remaining as you're speaking. It is very important that we keep time. So after your 15 seconds are up, there will be a hard stop. And that's just simply because of the time constraints of the evening. At the very end of this forum, the Inkster Chapter for Delta Sigma Theta has provided a QR code for a survey. It is very important that we get your feedback on this event and we will use that information for further events in the future. So at the, at the end of that, so with that being said, I'm going to start asking questions. I hope that you all are ready and we look forward to your answers. Give me one second. Question one, as I repeated, there is one minute response for each candidate. Do you want to help them introduce themselves? I'm sorry, my apologies. I was full steam ahead. I was excited about tonight's evening. First off, can we have all the candidates introduce themselves? You have two minutes and I appreciate that, my apologies. Thank you.
Okay, who's starting?
We're going to start.
Aronda Chastain?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, why not?
Thank you.
So good evening, everybody. I want to first thank Canton Township Clerk, Michael Seagrist, the Western Wayne County Chapter of the NAACP, and of course, the women of the Inkster Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated for putting this on, as well as all of the members of the community are here tonight. I am currently the vice president of the Plymouth Canton Community School District. I was appointed to the board in 2021. I have a daughter who graduated from the IB program in 2020. I have a senior who is a marching band and jazz band enthusiast. I am excited to be here tonight to share my thoughts. And I'm going to try to be really brief so that we can get to questions from the audience. So I think I'm going to end my introduction there with just thank you for being here and I'm excited to share more.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Anupam Choksedu and I also want to thank everyone for putting on this program and for all of you for being here and being very attentive to school board elections. As we know, they're critical to making sure that we have a strong, vibrant community school district. I am a mother educator and a current board member at Plymouth Canton Community Schools. I've been serving on the board for five years now. I've lived in Canton for over 20 years and have a child that attends one of our high schools. I have over 25 years of experience in public education, which include teacher, tutor, ISD consultant, administrator, director, and extensive experience in policy education and innovative programs. My love, actually, my path for public education was not linear. It was through multiple challenges and opportunities to work with homeless kids and underserved kids that I quickly saw the power of authentic relationships and meaningful support. Once I saw that, I quickly changed my major in college from chemistry to wanting to be a high school math science teacher and never looked back. And that love for education has continued and led me to a path to serve on the Plymouth Canton Community School Board. I was appointed in 2016 and fell in love with the work, with the staff, with the students, and the larger community. And we've made progress, yet we have so much more work to do in our community. And I look forward to continuing to serve our community in this capacity and in other roles in public education.
Hi, everyone. Again, thank you for, to all of our hosts for putting this on and for all of you for coming to hear us and to participate. My name is Amanda Crinkie and it truly is a privilege and an honor to be running for PCCS School Board. As a graduate, as a parent, and as a teacher in the district, I do not take this responsibility lightly. I had some of the most amazing teachers growing up here and they all contributed to my passion for learning and teaching. After graduating from Salem in 2002, I went on to Michigan State University to become a teacher. As a first generation college graduate, I received a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in curriculum and teaching, both from MSU, so that I can make a difference in the lives of children. I've had a broad teaching career, including working in public schools, charter schools, and spent a summer teaching in South Africa. In 2011, I took some time off from the classroom to stay home with my own kids until they both were in school full time. Over the past five years, I returned to the classroom as a substitute teacher in our PCCS school, subbing across all grade levels and in the many different buildings. I'm the only candidate running for a six-year term that is a graduate of the district, a current parent in the district, and has taught here. My experiences and perspective as all three make me the most qualified to serve our community in this role. In addition, I'd like to highlight that I am running my campaign for the six-year term as a truly nonpartisan person. I have not sought endorsements or accepted endorsements from special interest groups or political party funding. My political career peaked in high school as student council president, so I am truly only here because I care so much about our community and, thank you, because I care so much about our community and I have the passion, experience, and skill set to bring our community together and move forward in a direction of growth and success for all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patty McCoy. I am running for a two-year seat. There's two separate sections on the ballot, so I'm running for a two-year seat. I have lived in the city of Plymouth for a bit over 30 years. Prior to that, I lived in Canton for a while. I am currently a middle school teacher. I teach math, social studies, and I support the ESL kids in southwest Detroit. Previous to teaching, I did have an accounting degree and I worked as an auditor. My children, who are now adults, had attended the schools from kindergarten through high school graduation. Then they went on to graduate from state universities in Michigan. They, I was an active parent volunteer while I had children in school. I did PFO, parent council, Girl Scout leader. I was also in the band boosters. My daughter did color guard, which by the way, also went through college. And after that, I've still worked with the district as a community volunteer. I worked on the 2013 Say Yes to PCCS bond that built Liberty Middle School. And then in 2016, on the Wayne Reesah Enhancement Village. I've been on the school board since 2017. I've served as president, vice president, secretary. I sit on the policy committee and I've been on that since 2015. And I am the current chair. I'm running because my children received an excellent education in the district and I want to ensure that other children have the same opportunities that they did. And also, as a current classroom teacher, I can see the effects of decisions made on the lives of students and teachers every day. So I'm asking for your vote on November 8th or absentee if you vote early. And also, thank you for having this forum.
Hi, my name is Nathan Morris. My wife and I moved to Canton in 2015. When we came here, we came for the excellent reputation of the Plymouth Canton School District. At that time, I found that Plymouth Canton was number three in the state, and I thought that was astounding. Now, my wife and I chose to start our family here and now we have two young daughters. My oldest is three and she's about to start kindergarten. And I've started looking into the school district. I have to say, this is not the school district I moved to. As an engineer, I've gone through and I've looked at the data and I am deeply troubled with the trends and patterns that I've seen in the quality of education provided from this school district since 2016. Since that time, our schools have been in a steady decline. Academics have fallen behind in priority. And our test scores are proficient sees and our enrollment are plummeting. And they are continue, continuing to head in that direction. And in my campaign, this being my first time running for politics, it's taken me a little while to find my voice. I'm new and I've not familiar with the territory. I know, after seeing the data that I'm going to go over tonight, that this is my voice. We must return academic excellence back to this district. Please. Is that the cutout or? Oh. Thank you. That was quite odd.
Perfect timing. Oh, okay, pretty cool. Thank you. I appreciate it. Hello, my name is Sebastian Osterberg. I am a 2019 graduate from the Plymouth Canton Community Schools Board. I went to Salem High School and basically I grew up, I started off in Byrd Elementary, then went to middle school, and then public school. Well, in high school, I went to PSEP, technically Salem, but in my opinion, it's technically all three. I've had classes in every building. Honestly, the reason that I'm running here today, and actually, I have already run previously. In 2020, I ran for the board for the partial term as well. And this year, I thought, why not try again? The reason that I'm running essentially is that being a student who just graduated in 2019, I have seen exactly what life is like in the district. And I do believe that this is actually one of my, one of my forties, one of my advantages is that I am the youngest candidate by far running in the entire election. I know exactly what students go through. I know exactly all about Lake PSEP, the path. I know about freshman Friday. I know about all these different things that, okay, well, freshman Friday is actually not true, but that's something that the upperclassmen tell the freshmen. But all in all, all in all, my journey, my life, I've grown up in this district. This has been essentially kind of like my second home. I've been public school my entire life. My parents are public school teachers. My parents are union members. I've been, I actually am right now studying in college to become a high school teacher to teach social studies. So education is my passion. And I really care about this district. For me, my policies are very, very simple. Put students over politics. I've seen many times, not just in this district, but also in other districts, and just like on a national and even like state, I've seen politics being pushed in schools. I've seen political ideology being pushed no matter what. And that has been at the detriment to students and families and our district has suffered because of it. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Picard and I have lived in this district for 36 years. I have four children that went through Plymouth Canton schools. They have all gone to college, have been successful, took different paths through college. And they all had different abilities and interests. So I have, as far as education, I, from high school, I went to Franklin High School in Livonia. And I went to Madonna College for nursing. I did not finish that. My mom had cancer. My dad had Alzheimer's, a lot of medical problems in the family, but they told me to take business classes, so I did. And so I got a degree in business, which was easier without having clinicals. And then I decided, I got married, we decided to have kids, and moved to this district. Then with, and I did not continue my education. I myself had had cancer and was focusing on that. But then I, as far as education, I furthered my education after my first husband died. And I went back to school and I applied to, for emergency management and child development and decided that I would go the route of child development because I could be home when my kids are home. And I actually did not go back to work after my last one graduated. So I was a stay-at-home mom. I got the perspective from the kids. We had kids stay at our house all the time. My boys played football. My daughter was in tennis. They were in a lot of sports activities. And we actually was involved in helping a lot of kids with homework and started to see that a lot of kids were lacking the foundations, what they needed in education. So to help tutor somebody, help somebody with their homework, meant you had to go back and help them to first learn how to read and get through that. So there was a lot of that happening at our home. A lot of people stayed there. I just saw a lot of perspective from the inside. I drove kids back and forth everywhere and I've seen this district become more divisive as far as race issues and diversity.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Picard.
People had camaraderie. Sorry.
No worries. Thank you, Ms. Picard. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
You know what the problem is? When you are 68, I don't know how you can put things in two minutes or three minutes. I grew up in Brazil, the country of Brazil. Twelve years old, I was working at factories and going to night school. And I never stopped going to school and never stopped working. And I still do that today. I have been basically all over the world. I taught Spanish in Jamaica. I taught English in Ecuador. I have five licenses in the US, five states, teaching, principal, curriculum, supervision. I have five graduate degrees. I'm fluent in four languages and I'm learning a fifth language now. And right now, I teach at the Wayne County Community College. I love my students. Everywhere I went throughout the world, I just love my students and I work with them. I help them 24/7. Sometimes it's 11:00 at night and they are texting me for help. And my husband says, how come your phone never stops? I said, well, my students have a life. They work and this is the time when they are doing their homework. They need help and I'm here for them. And I have taught elementary level, middle school, high school, university, and graduate level university too. I love education. I'm still taking classes. So, so now that you know something about myself, when I answer the questions, you know why I'm answering like that. Okay?
Oh, my name is Zia, by the way.
Hi, I'm Judy Westra and I'd like to thank our hosts this evening and I'd like to thank all of you for attending. I was born and raised in Baltimore, Maryland, and I graduated from Baltimore City Public Schools and the University of Maryland. After working for several years in the Washington DC area, I moved to Plymouth Canton in, to Michigan in the 1990s and then into Plymouth since, in the early 2000s. And I've lived in Plymouth Township since 2001. I have more than 30 years of leadership experience in the information technology field, delivering large software solutions in both the US and Canada. I've also been for many years a community volunteer in the schools, most notably in the areas of the STEM programs and robotics. I have two children, one who is a proud graduate of Plymouth High School and who is currently attending MSU's James Madison Residential College. I also have a son that is in the STEM Academy at Plymouth High School. And honestly, my children are the reason that I am running for school board now. I became interested, we adopted our children from China and transferred them into the district. We adopted them as preschoolers and we transferred them into the district in sixth grade and third grade. And I am deeply aware, because of my experience with my children, I am deeply aware of the impact, powerful impact, that equality public education and an equitable public education can have on the success of our students. I am grateful for this opportunity to run and I hope that I get a chance to serve you in the coming years. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank all of the candidates for introducing yourselves. We appreciate the information. I'm going to start off with question number one, and I'm also going to remind you that you all have one minute to answer the question. So I appreciate that. Question number one. On March 10th, 2020, voters passed the 2020 bond, which addresses facility insight improvements, equity of facilities, enhanced safety and security throughout the school district, furniture and playground upgrades, school bus purchases, and addresses imminent infrastructure and technology needs at most facilities. Did you support it? If yes, why? If no, why? And I'm going to start the question, I'm sorry, I'm going to start the answering with candidate Sidhu.
Thank you. Thanks for that question. I was actually serving as our board president during that time and believed wholeheartedly on the investments needed in our school district. I've seen our public education system decimated by statewide policy and disinvestments. So we have to make sure that we continue to grow our district. We found an opportunity to have a bond with zero tax increase. And all of the things that were just mentioned are needed by our schools. Our schools needed playground equipment, I'm sorry, accessible playground equipment. We needed dedicated gymnasiums and classes. We needed new technology. There was infrastructure needs for outdated buildings. All of these things improve the lives of students and staff. So yes, I believed in it, pushed for it, and am very glad that it was passed unanimously. Well, not unanimously, but with a large margin of 63%.
Thank you. Candidate Crink.
I just want to apologize to the candidates for, I think that microphone might have some feedback, so we'll see. I'll keep that off. And can you share with the person to your net? Right? Thank you.
Okay, buddy, okay. I 100% supported the bond. As a student who went to Byrd, and my kids also went to Byrd and are at Gallimore, I fully support the idea of the gym and the gym and cafeteria being separate. Like, it's definitely going to be a highlight for the buildings. And I got to tour some of the new facilities that have been added and it's amazing. But I'd also like to say that I don't even think it's like enough. I still think that we need to do like more to upkeep our buildings and our structures and that now that we're getting all of this brand new things, like the beautiful play structures, that we need to have plans to maintain and that we continue to improve on our facilities because it's important. We all know people feel better or are going to work harder and take care of things that are like nice and we want to encourage that. And it also increases learning and it gives people pride and lures them into the district as we need to do as we've lost families to other places. So I 100% supported it and honestly, I wish that we could do even more and hopefully maintain all the new things that we're getting. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I was actually on the board at the time. I served on the steering committee, which did work for about a year prior to the bond being put on the ballot. We did have a huge list that we had to pare down so that we did not have a tax increase go along with the bond. And we wanted to make sure that we kept the items that would provide the equity for our children, the gym, and so everybody would have their own gym and cafeteria, upgrade of some of the spaces. And then during the actual bond time, most of the school board members went out into the community to meet with various stakeholder groups to encourage them to vote for the bond. So yes, I was very supportive of the bond.
Yes, as a parent in the community, I supported the bond. It seemed silly to vote against it when I moved here specifically for the schools. So as a parent and taxpayer, I'm going to do everything in my power to make the schools better. But let's look at what we can do with money and resources a little bit better. At this time, 40% of third graders are not proficient in reading and writing. What can we do? Can we make smaller class sizes, hire more teachers? What can we do to help these third graders that cannot read and write? They are going to struggle their entire lives. They're nine years old and they're already set up for a very difficult, hard life. What can we do as a district to make things better for them? Thank you.
I'm going to interject. I just received instructions that if the microphones will pop on the letter P, so I would like for you all to kind of lower your mics so that you can talk over the mics so that you will have less feedback. Thank you.
Just what you'll want to do is talk over the microphone. If you talk into the end, it will pop on every P. See, this is a school board and we're learning, right? This is beautiful.
I will make sure not to use that letter. To start off with, so naturally, in 2020, I got to vote and I voted in favor of the bond. For me, it was a no-brainer. I don't really understand why individuals would vote against that. However, however, I do believe that the way that we've been spend, well, using this money has not been the wisest. For instance, I know that we're replacing many different playgrounds throughout the district. I went to Byrd and I've seen, you know, just the Byrd playground get torn up and building new buildings, which I understand is important. But I think that we can use the money for better, for instance, safety. Safety is extremely important. Unfortunately, in America, which, you know, the only first-world country that actually deals with this problem, we have a very, very high level of gun deaths. Gun violence is a very big problem. And schools are continually attacked. We just saw what happened in Uvalde, Texas. We saw what happened even, even more recently. There was, I believe, no, Uvalde was the most recent, but all of these different situations, it's all catastrophic. I think that if we can actually spend our money to focus on security, mostly on hardening our schools, making our schools safer, making our entrances more secure, we can actually save lives. So I would like to spend our money, not on playgrounds specifically, but more on safety.
Thank you, candidate Osterberg. We appreciate you. We appreciate you.
Hi. Is that, can you hear me okay? Or is that close? Okay. I believe I supported for the bond. I usually always have voted for the bond. I know in the past, there has been, I remember, I remember somebody, a bunch of, you know, group of moms going out and deciding what we needed, and sometimes the perspectives can get a little extreme on things that we need. And for instance, they had a, they wanted new cabinets in the home economic room, and I remember looking at those and going, well, those look like my cabinets at home. And so I always kind of, so I'm always hesitant, but I do believe that there is a lot of things that the schools do benefit as far as the, just even the functioning, air conditioning, just some of the simple things that makes the environment comfortable. Oh, that's fast. But I would like, I would also like to see, make sure that there is security, like, for kids, especially at the high school, with going back and forth from the different high schools. I've walked it. It takes a while, and I just, I'm concerned about just the outer areas and safety there, so.
Okay, I did vote yes for that. And one thing that I find in education is, especially with technology, sometimes we buy beautiful technology, but we don't have accountability, and we don't have real training for teachers to use those technologies, and that happens in my college, too. I hope they're not listening to me right now. But anyhow, the point is, when we buy some technology, let's make sure we follow up, because the technology is for the students. We need to work for the students at all times, and we need to keep the personnel accountable to use that technology on behalf of the students, okay? That's mandatory. Also, the playground is good. Let the children play, let them, you know, they need physical activity. That's important, too. Okay, he already showed me the sign. Okay, I'm done. Okay.
Yes, absolutely. I supported the bond issue. In fact, I was one of the grassroots moms that was out there campaigning for it and handing out literature and attempting to educate the community. So I'm very proud of our community that it passed, and I think that we can all be proud as we drive around the district and see the incredible amount of building and infrastructure and, you know, for example, their school nearest to me is getting a new gym. I think we can all be proud of that, and I look forward to seeing that infrastructure being used for years to come to better educate our children.
Am I okay? Can y'all hear me? Nope, turn it a little more, a little more. Okay, there we go. So to answer it directly, yes, I supported it. I voted for the bond. And as a current school board member, I support the allocation of those resources. And so the work that we've done to make sure that our playground equipment is inclusive, meaning that all of our students, regardless of ability, can access it to enjoy it, we made sure that that was in place. We also have done quite a bit of work specifically around making sure that our physical building is safe. We've done amazing upgrades to our security. Of course, I can't go into detail, but we've done quite a bit of work around security and making sure that our buildings are secure, that our entrances are secure. And so if you go on PSEPS campus, the parks in particular, you'll see a lot of those improvements. The only thing I would add there is that what was really important to me in the allocation of those resources is that we were mindful of ensuring that minority-owned, veteran-owned, women-owned businesses were absolutely considered as subcontractors, and I think the way we allocate resources and who we do business with is important.
Thank you all for answering our first question. I am now going to turn it over to Ms. Braxton as she prepares to ask the next question.
All right, and good evening to all of the candidates. First and foremost, in my professional capacity, I have to learn how to read the room. We have an hour and a half for this forum, and I think it's more important that we hear from the people in the audience than taking all of our questions that we have prepared. So I will not be asking any questions that I prepared, but I will be taking questions from the audience. And so this question is from a member of the audience, so for the person who submitted this question, thank you. We all know by now, or I'm sorry, we all by now should have heard about the video that was posted by a PSEPS student last year that used the N-word, referred to African-Americans as monkeys, and mentioned dragging them. As a person appointed to the school board, please tell us the steps and plans of action you would put in place to handle any and all future situations similar to this. And I am starting with candidate Crinky.
Okay, so we moved it down, if you can hear me. So I feel like we need to emotionally even talk about it, because it's so upsetting that that would happen. And it's, I think, when things like happen, our threats happen on school or to our other, from one student to another student or a group, that there has to be like serious repercussions. I think that the district needs to make known like what those repercussions are. You need to, it's like, I mean, I don't always just say like, oh, like everyone gets like expelled or you're kicked out, because we also have to realize that like education is like the most powerful tool that we have to change things like this. So on one hand, I think that as students, there needs to be very, very harsh consequences for making threats like that, and we need to do whatever we can to let students know that we support them and that we take these things seriously, and that people need to be informed, because I think when we don't inform people that things like this happen in a timely matter or acknowledge that it exists, it creates like more problems.
Thank you, candidate Crinky. We appreciate you.
I can just turn it back on. So after that happened, it was very upsetting to all of us. We had several meetings with the superintendent. We also met with the various law enforcement agencies. We came up with the idea that, yes, we did, there did need to be more transparency around notification of, to the public. One of the hard things is with a school, the children still have privacy rights, and so you can't say what happens to individual students. However, we did work with the superintendent to tighten up language around things like that, about these things could happen to you if this event occurs, to make sure people understand how very serious it is. And it's an ongoing conversation. Unfortunately, we can't, we don't have full control over what other people's bad decisions are, and we need to make sure people understand the severity. There has to be severe consequences, and then we also have to have education of the rest of the community.
Thank you, candidate McCain. We appreciate you.
I can't imagine how the parents felt when they found out about this. And as a school board, we have to take issues such as this very seriously, and there should be a in-depth investigation to find out exactly what happened, and there should definitely be some very serious consequences, because this kind of behavior is unacceptable. And to promote a culture of mutual respect among all students, this can't be tolerated, and it must be made an example of. I also agree with Amanda that these things should be weighted. We should account for the fact that these are children, and children make mistakes, and we shouldn't punish them for the rest of their lives for a very, or decision that they made in their youth. Thank you.
To be honest, if I was in charge and I got to decide what to do, honestly, I am completely in support of automatic expulsion for something like that. I actually, I haven't seen the video. I would like to see it to understand exactly, but at least from what I've heard, it was horrific. And I understand that, you know, we're not going to say who posted the video. We're not going to talk about exactly who did this, but I am totally in support of automatically expelling them and making it very clear from here on out to students that if you try anything to try to purposely disrupt, like, just like the student body in such a way, I mean, this, at least from what I've heard about the video, was horrible. I mean, it was disgusting. There's no way that you can try to rationalize it, oh, it was just a joke, that you, that's, no, that goes totally beyond it. So for me, automatic expulsion. We don't talk about who it is. We don't try to glorify their name, but we just say, you're out. We're not going to deal with this. This is what I think.
Thank you, candidate.
Got it? Well, thanks. I don't know all the full details of that. I know that there was an incident that happened. I would, I don't know if I'd do expulsion, I would definitely have a suspension period time where things can be investigated, talk to family, find out what's going on, see if there's any further help or something that this child would need. I don't think, I think any kind of threat like that to somebody should be seriously taken. I know what it's like. My son, when he was in like second grade, was beat up on the way home. It's not a, it's not a good feeling, and it's not safe. And I know there's other things out there. I don't know, society doesn't really have a whole lot to treat some of this or to find out. I know like there's, my cousin works at, had worked at Hawthorne Center, but there was a lot of situations that could help kids, but I just, I think it's very, something we have to take seriously, especially today. So I'd say suspension for, until it's fixed, or until there's, the principal decides it's time to come back.
Thank you, candidate Picard.
You know, I fully agree with many of you that, including the one who said, get the child out of the school, because this was inappropriate, that shouldn't happen anywhere. It doesn't matter who or to whom, but this is inappropriate. If we need help to find another school for this child, we can maybe do some investigation on that, but to have, this wasn't just a little push or something like that. It was really dramatic. We cannot accept that in a school, because that's going, that may infiltrate other possibilities for the same type of action.
So the video and the incident was horrific, and I think that it highlighted a need for increased transparency as to the consequences in the community and absolute zero tolerance for that. One of the things that I also think that we need to do is we need to address the community, the culture of racism and hate that is in our community. So I'd like to see not only consequences applied at the school level to the student, but I'd like to see parent involvement, and I'd like to see, for example, the forum, the town hall that the community, that the school board had after the event. I'd like to see those events expanded and more involvement of the entire community, not just the people that were affected by, or most affected by, this event, because racism and hate affects us all.
As a mom in a district, but mostly as a person of color, I responded immediately by working with the superintendent as well as listening to parents in our community. I also challenged that all parents should have been outraged by the event that happened, that it shouldn't have been just an outcry of parents who look like me, that racism in our district is a community issue, not a black parent, a black family issue, and that if we are going to change the tide and make sure that all of our students feel safe in the community, it is going to rest on the backs of the people who don't look like me. And so as a school board member, I called us out and asked for advocates, because I'm telling you, when I got appointed to the board, we couldn't have a school board meeting without lots of parents showing up as related to COVID. We had security officers and police officers escorting us to our car for safety. But when our students of color were challenged and threatened, no one showed up except for people who looked like us, me. And so if we're going to do anything in this district, we have to do it collectively, and that we have to create a community that embraces all students, and that rests with me and with you.
Thank you. Candidate Chastain.
Thank you. You know, I applaud Member Chastain and Member Wilson. A few of us did speak out at that meeting in terms of the horrific incident that we were hearing about, and we, the board was not aware of the situation that had happened months ago. So as we started to look at what was happening, because we were just getting information so much later, and I applaud the parents that came to the board meeting that were rightly upset, that were rightly demanding proper communication, transparency, and action. So the board looked at the protocols that were in place, and we saw tremendous gaps in how we handled the situation. And I have to applaud my board colleagues for working together with law enforcement, the superintendent, our security team, our students, our parents, to come together and say, we have to do better, we have to change these laws and policies to protect all children. So we do have a protocol and a system in place that's better, but we need to do more work in that, and that includes, as Member Chastain said, all of us working together.
This is directly aligned to that question. We have quite a few from the field, some extremely astute members here, so it's making it quite challenging as to what to ask next, but the heat will still continue as we think about the, what criteria and processes should be used to select or ban curricular materials. And I will start with Patty.
So the district has, of course, employed professionals whose job it is to evaluate curriculum. As school board members, we do approve the curriculum, and of course, we want robust curriculum. We want, it has to meet the state standards, and we've also, the district is also moving to make sure all of the curriculum is also culturally responsive. So once they have, they go through, there's an entire curriculum cycle that has gone through. They choose curriculum, they pilot it to make sure it is the right thing in several classrooms and get some feedback. So we do have to have a rigorous process to, we probably should not be banning materials, and if there are challenges, there is an entire process that those kinds of things go through with a large committee of community members and educators.
All classroom materials must be age-appropriate and academically relevant. Everything that falls out of those areas has no place in the classroom. Now, as far as curriculum goes, we need to focus more on academic excellence. As I noted earlier, 40% of our third graders in this district struggle with reading and writing. That is not just a statistic. Those are 40%. Those are young lives. They're nine years old. They are going to struggle their entire lives because they can't read and write. To function in society, you have to be able to read and write. Now, what can we do that hasn't been done in the last six years to fix that? Thank you.
I would have to say I agree with Mr. Morris on that. Yes, I think that we have to make sure that all curriculum is, of course, age-appropriate. However, however, I do not believe that that means that we should just sugarcoat our curriculum. When we talk about American history, we have to talk about all of American history, including the extremely messy parts of American history. When we talk about just any sort of a subject, we need to make sure that we talk about it in full. So we're not going to try to cover things up or, you know, gloss over certain subjects that make people uncomfortable. However, nonetheless, we need to make sure that we talk about it in full. So we're not going to try to cover things up or, you know, gloss over certain subjects that make people uncomfortable. However, nonetheless, we need to make sure that we talk about it in full. However, nonetheless, we need to make sure that our curriculum is age appropriate. And this comes into play when it comes to things such as sex ed, which our current sex ed curriculum is actually amazing. I support it and it works. We are abstinence-based, which means that we talk about contraception and abstinence, which is very important. But overall, overall, we have to make sure that we teach the truth while not going too far to just provoke people.
Just to note, I did attend the, I was one person who did attend the event at the Discovery Middle School for, on diversity and did find that very valuable. The other thing, so as far as curriculum, I've watched curriculum change throughout my kids' years in the school. When my son was in first, when one of my sons was in first grade, they brought in the Math Connections. Math Connections was quite different from what my daughter had had and my other son for math. And it was not, it was not a good program. And they also, at the same time, brought in math, Math Connections, I'm sorry, Math Connections was in the middle school. Everyday Math was in the elementary school. I ended up homeschooling my son for a semester in middle school because of all the varieties of the math. And also, there was a bunch of engineers, fathers that, and men and women that went in and talked to the school about this. And there were some changes made eventually, but the math, a lot of kids suffered for maybe trying something out on them. I don't know. I think there needs to be some tried and true curriculums. We need to look at competition, what other schools are using to see what is most valuable.
Thank you, Kennedy Picard.
You know, one of my undergrad degrees is in mathematics. I love math. And I remember my son was in middle school and they were doing what we call math counts. I went to competitions with them. And that's what I want to do if I am in the school board. I want to motivate students to do well. And these competitions were amazing. Even before I finished reading the problem, okay, they had the answers. The students had the answer. I want to motivate them to embrace mathematics and to do a lot of curriculum that follows, that follows articulation. Where are you? If we have a scale from one to eight, where are you? Let's pick you up where you are and let's bring you up. That's my goal. Bring them up.
So all children, all curriculum must be rigorous, must follow state standards. I also believe that it needs to be culturally relevant and have examples of all of our children, all ethnic groups, all socioeconomic groups, all races. I especially feel this way because as the parent of children of color, I've seen that Asian communities are not as well represented in classes such as American history as are the European-centric history that, you know, people our age mostly learned in school. So I think it's important that our children see representation. I'd also like to challenge some of the comments about reading scores. My children were among that 40% that could not read at nine, at third grade. It was because of PCCS that they can read today and are straight A students. Thank you.
Repeat the question, just because after so, after so many responses, I want to make sure I'm actually answering the question.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. What criteria and processes should be used to select or ban curricular materials?
There's a process in place to determine what the curriculum should be, and that's not set by the board. We have to meet the standards set by the Department of Education so that our children can actually meet graduation standards. When we talk about banning something in education, that is very concerning as a parent because the question I begin to think about is what material is being, like being banned and why? And who benefits from that ban? The other thing I've heard across this particular panel to say that the curriculum should be academically appropriate. Who defines academically appropriate? And when only certain voices define that, we find ourselves with curriculum that is not inclusive to all students. And having a diverse curriculum doesn't just benefit Black, Indigenous, people of color. It benefits all students because then we can see what is possible for every kid. So the curriculum and banning, there's a process in place already. And when parents have concerns about it, there is already a process in place. Lastly, I sit on the SPA Committee, the Student Performance and Achievement Committee. Parents are welcome to come. That's where we review student data as well as curriculum.
Thank you, Kennedy Chastain. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Yes, there is a current criterion process. That is through the Student Performance and Achievement Committee. I've been a chair of that committee for over five years and parents are a part of that. You all need to be a part of that. I think we need more voice and more engagement in that. But as Liranda said, the districts have to follow the Michigan merit curriculum and state graduation requirements and state standards. So in meeting those, our job as a board is to make sure that our curriculum resources are accessible, relevant, rigorous, engaging, and meet local and state requirements. We have to ensure that we have broad representation so all students see themselves in the curriculum and what they're learning. And some of you may have heard of this concept of mirrors and windows. You need to be able to see yourself in the curriculum that's looking in the mirror, but you also need to be able to look out the window and see all the different possibilities and experiences and learn from that.
It's interesting to come last. So as far as banning material, I think that's like the core of the question, correct? So the, there is a process through the district because I just recently had a conversation with Dr. Dia de Rady about this. And there is a process that they go through. Currently, our district does not have a book ban list, so to speak, but there is a process that they follow through and are supposed to vet materials before it gets in the hands of children. Recently, this happened in our district. The schools were given a science book that teachers looked at and were like, eh, can't use this with our elementary kids. And that was immediately like taken out of the schools, returned to teaching and learning and is in a process right now of trying to get their funds back for purchasing the book. This was a book that was recommended by Wayne Risa. Don't know why, because they haven't called me back when I asked them why they would recommend it. But there is a process to follow. I encourage parents, if there's a book of question, that you read the books before you say it should be banned. Parents need to look at what your kids are bringing home, like you are free to do that. And, but there is a process in place. I also think that they do need to vet curriculum, that it makes sense, that it's financially sound.
Thank you, Kennedy Crinkie. We appreciate you.
My apologies. Let me repeat that again. This question was taken from our audience member. They wrote, "At the last meeting, some of the board members appeared to be visibly frustrated with your fellow Diaz members and the format. Can you help us understand how you plan on working through your frustrations to gain consensus amongst all the board members?"
Absolutely.
If I could interject very briefly, I'm going to take some judicial privileges at this point. One, we are not going to ask any questions to one member because I do not want to cause any chaos. This has been an amazing forum so far. I am sure that we have a lot of differences of opinions in this room. It's probably just clear. And I want to keep it on the up and up. So I'm going to rephrase that question so it's not a direct question about a specific
Anyhow, if you have three children like I had, you learn how to negotiate because there
event. The question I'm going to ask is what is the best way to address differences of opinion
is always a little conflict, yeah, between the children.
on the board and between the board and administration if you are elected as a board member?
And at my college, I was voted to be the negotiator at the college because differences of opinions
We will still start with you. Eh, I'm going to even change it up a little bit.
are always there.
Ms. Westra, your W, you probably never go first very often, do you?
So you just have to look like you, you mentioned, Judy.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Do you go first very often?
You need to come up with a consensus, okay, within the group.
No, not very.
You're up. Go ahead, Ms. Westra. And we'll actually go this way, so we'll just go down the line.
And there is no way out. You just need to, you know, negotiate. Put your ways in, your ways out, and we come up with the best option. There is no other way.
Well, I sometimes struggle with just that consensus process. I believe that everybody has views, they do research, and sometimes there isn't an agreement, and that means that we vote. It's kind of what I grew up as, is you vote, you know there's going to be people that disagree. But if, that's probably one reason we have seven on a board. But I do believe it's good to work for the best, the things that will be the best solution for a situation. But I also know that sometimes there is going to be a disagreement and it will stand as a disagreement and we still need to be able to get along and come back and discuss things. So I, I kind of, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I love to find compromises. I always like to talk and try to find a way to make as many people as possible happy. But to be honest, my, I'm running to put students over politics. That's my motto. So I don't mind being the only no vote on any piece of like policy proposal. I don't mind being the odd one out. If I feel that something is pushing politics over what is best for the students, I will stand up. I'm not going to just like join in the consensus and say it's going to be a seven to zero decision. No, if need be, it'll be a six to one decision because, you know, there are certain things that I will stand by.
I understand the original question, and I'll answer the original question that was directed at me. I am a very passionate person and I am a fighter. And at that forum, I was tired of hearing the lies. Our school district-
Mr. Morris, if I could interrupt you, the question was changed, and so we're going to ask that you answer the same question that all the other candidates answered at this time. And I changed it specifically, Mr. Morris, so it was not a personal attack on you as that was an inappropriate question. So if we can start his time over and you can please answer the question that was posed to all other candidates, I would greatly appreciate it, Mr. Morris. Thank you.
Again, because there was a question directed directly at me, I'll explain that I have the best interests of the children at heart. The school system is not doing well. Test scores have been declining for the last six years. I am not kidding when I'm telling you that 40% of your third graders cannot read and write. And that fires me up. I can't believe that this is not a all-hands-on-deck, five-alarm situation. I can't believe that this is the first time, reading into this data, that I found out about this. And if you elect me, I will advocate very profoundly. I will advocate strongly for your children as they are mine. Thank you.
So school board members tend to be opinionated people. That's why people run for the school board. People have an opinion and they want to voice it and they're not shy about it. So going into things, we have to assume good intentions on the part of everyone else and also assume that everyone is working towards the good of the children in the district. And if we're putting students first, then at the end of the day, the decision that is made, all the board members need to support it. I have been in the position of being a no vote where it's one or two other people have voted no and the decision passed. But we work to make sure that whatever is happening is successful because the fate of the district rests on the, making sure that all children are successful. So at the end of the day, you have to support the decisions being made by the board.
Okay, so I like to look at our district or looking at like the sides or people having different ideas. It's kind of like the political climate that we're dealing with now. We're going to have extreme views on one side, extreme views on the other. It doesn't mean that one or the other is right or wrong, but what we have to realize is that everyone has to come to someplace in the middle and that with our, like America as it is now and our school, in our school district, that like most of our population is going to fall within that middle. So it's not going to be making decisions for the school board based on what our opinions are or what our feelings are or what our friends tell us, that we have to base our decisions in facts. And those don't require our approval because they are facts. So that keeps you centered on what is the best for kids and there's not going to be a sway of opinion or needed of a consensus because facts are facts.
You know, board work is collaborative work focused around student achievement and student well-being, and that's for all kids. And our job is to make sure that we build consensus and create paths for success for all kids. And it's not about the loudest voice. It's not about being the most frustrated. And I've been at board meetings frustrated seeing the same opportunity gaps of our subgroup data appear over and over and over again. But you can't let that frustration overtake the progress that you need to make collectively. So you need to respect other people's voice. And the other piece is, also having been at the other end where I was attacked in public board meetings, you can't let that shut you down. You have to, again, build consensus, whether it's having those one-on-one conversations or pulling the person aside later on. Again, we're here for kids. This is not about our personal egos. We're here for all kids and all means all.
So as the senior vice president of diversity, equity and inclusion at one of the largest Catholic health systems in the country, on a daily basis, I am responsible for more than 115,000 coll-. So school board members tend to be opinionated people. That's why people run for the school board. People have an opinion, and they want to voice it, and they're not shy about it. So going into things, we have to assume good intentions on the part of everyone else and also assume that everyone is working towards the good of the children in the district. And if we're putting students first, then at the end of the day, the decision that is made, all the board members need to support it. I have been in the position of being a no vote where it's one or two other people have voted no, and the decision passed. But we work to make sure that whatever is happening is successful because the fate of the district rests on the, making sure that all children are successful. So at the end of the day, you have to support the decisions being made by the board.
Okay, so I like to look at our district or looking at like the sides or people having different ideas. It's kind of like the political climate that we're dealing with now. We're going to have extreme views on one side, extreme views on the other. It doesn't mean that one or the other is right or wrong, but what we have to realize is that everyone has to come to someplace in the middle and that with our, like America as it is now and our school, in our school district, that like most of our population is going to fall within that middle. So it's not going to be making decisions for the school board based on what our opinions are or what our feelings are or what our friends tell us, that we have to base our decisions in facts, and those don't require our approval because they are facts. So that keeps you centered on what is the best for kids, and there's not going to be a sway of opinion or needed of a consensus because facts are facts.
You know, board work is collaborative work focused around student achievement and student well-being, and that's for all kids. And our job is to make sure that we build consensus and create paths for success for all kids. And it's not about the loudest voice. It's not about being the most frustrated. And I've been at board meetings frustrated seeing the same opportunity gaps of our subgroup data appear over and over and over again. But I, you can't let that frustration overtake the progress that you need to make collectively. So you need to respect other people's voice. And the other piece is, also having been at the other end where I was attacked in public board meetings, you can't let that shut you down. You have to, again, build consensus, whether it's having those one-on-one conversations or pulling the person aside later on. Again, we're here for kids. This is not about our personal egos. We're here for all kids, and all means all.
So as the senior vice president of diversity, equity, and inclusion at one of the largest Catholic health systems in the country, on a daily basis, I am responsible for more than 115,000 colleagues who have very divergent opinions. And so in my professional life and my personal life, I start with where we agree. There's always a place you can start with where we agree, and then you go from there. And so part of being able to do that well when you, you are on a panel or in a board or serving in a leadership role is being very intentional about being an active listener, meaning listening to understand, not listening to respond. And then once you do that, you can vote based upon what you have heard and what your constituents support. That is my process, and that's what I've been doing. The last thing, because I only got 15 more seconds, I have to say this, is that I hope that the five-alarm fire that we talk about around the achievement gaps in that data is true because what the data is telling us is that we are failing brown and black children. So if you look at that data that we're talking about and disaggregate that and look at it by subgroups, we are failing children, but only specific groups of children. So let's sound the alarm.
So again, thank you to the audience. I'm still asking audience questions at this point in time. There are a lot of them. Did I get you? Oh, you can't hear me? I'm sorry. My apologies. I'm asking audience questions, and there's a lot of them, so I'm going to try to condense two of them if I can. And it deals with school security. How would PCS, PCCS handle the whole thing after seeing the drawings and parents not taking students home as it related to the Oxford shooting? And then what steps have been taken for security thus far? What do you think of metal detectors at the entrances to deter weapons? And we're going to start with Mr. Olstertag. I'm way out of order, so I apologize. So we're just going to start with you, Mr. Olstertag.
So it's a general school security question. So specifically, do you believe that metal detectors should be at the entrances of the school? And how would you, as an elected official for the school board, have handled the situation at Oxford when they saw the drawings and the parents not taking the students home? Thank you.
I would let, and I actually applaud the district for the fact that now we have a dog that actually is trained to sniff out firearms, which is very, very smart and very important. And if we maybe even get more of those, that'd be perfect. What I want to do with, and I'm ready to make the cuts where, if need be, in order to get there, I want to make sure that we have at some point one school resource officer in every single school building, whether it be an elementary school, whether it be middle school, someone there who can protect the students in case of gun violence because they think about having adult students and stuff. So we actually have someone there to protect the students even before the thing happens.
So as far as metal detectors, I'm a hard no. We have to be careful about our safety, but we also have to protect the rights of our students. I'm also a hard no on clear backpacks. There's a certain level of privacy, and I've been at a school with metal detectors. I went to high school in the South. It is a different environment, and we want to have a welcoming and, almost, I say safe environment, because it should be a safe environment, but there's a fine line because when you have kids coming through the metal detectors, they're very close to developing almost a prison mentality. They're not prisoners. They're students, and their rights matter and their feelings matter, and we should be very careful with the balance between personal rights and privacy and safety in our schools.
So I'm also a no on metal detectors. I teach at a school that has metal detectors, and with 400 children coming in, it takes a long time because many things will make them beep. A belt with a metal buckle will beep, so they have to take that off and go back through. It's kind of a mess. So I think the dog is a better idea, similar to in the airport when they have those dogs and you don't have to go through some of the TSA lines. So after the Oxford and then after the lockdown at the park, we did meet with the superintendent, and we've also met with law enforcement, and they have quite a robust program. And we can't get into the details, but I, they wouldn't have allowed that child to stay at school.
Hello. I, so teaching in the schools, like I work in multiple buildings, and I will tell you that there has never been a time, even I worked in a building close by a lockdown twice this past year, both elementary, and I have never felt, I've never felt unsafe. So if that helps parents, as someone who like goes to the buildings and I'm there all the time, I have never felt unsafe. But I will say like recently, I was listening to a podcast that was talking about school and, school and mass shootings, and one of the key components that we're talking about is noticing warning signs. And that a lot of times these issues happen with like a student who's in the school, so trying to like barricade buildings and keeping people out is not going to work because these are happening with our students, people who come to school regularly or who have ties to the building. We need to do more to notice the warning signs, to be getting children support, to be giving parent support, to lessening the caseloads of our social workers. We need to be giving access, not as, these aren't mental illnesses per se, but there are mental health issues that we don't address. Parents need to be aware. There needs to be more information given about what's happening-
Thank you.
-on social media and videos and YouTube and-
Thank you, candidate Cranki. We appreciate your participation. Thank you.
You know, I did want to mention that-
Is that P?
One of the biggest reasons for pushing BON 2020 was to ensure that every building had a secured entryway. And prior to that investment, all buildings were not safe and secured. So that's number one. Number two, my son was part of three lockdowns last year at the park, and I can just recall the amount of fear that kids went through as well as staff. We have a great security team that handled the situation well. All kids got to go home, staff got to go home. However, we couldn't rest at that point. We needed to look for, how do we get better? Where are the gaps? So we continue to work on that with the security team, with law enforcement, and we meet regularly to assess our protocols to ensure that our schools are a safe and welcoming environment. And this is a community effort. We have to look at all of our kids and ensure that they have adequate support and resources. And yes, I agree to looking at warning signs, ensure that students have support, to make sure that all of our students feel safe when they come in, and if there is something happening with a student, we look at the warning signs early enough. And I also like the investment, the innovative investment in the therapy dog that also-
Thank you, candidate Zito. We appreciate your participation. Thank you. So I think that we sit here with the benefit of hindsight, that we are, we are able to look back and learn from Oxford, and I think we could all say what we think we would have done in that situation. So if you're asking me my opinion, I am not personally in favor of metal detectors, but I'm not here to push what I am personally for or against. So if there was a need, a desire, and a push from our parents in our community to consider that, I would absolutely listen to the pros and the cons for it and vote in support of what the constituents are asking for. The last thing I would say is that, because it's just the way my brain is sort of wired, is that, is it a leading or lagging indicator? When we talk about having a metal detector in the school, that's a response to something. And so I would much rather spend time and energy thinking about what created, what, what sort of upstream policies, practices, what has created this downstream need for metal detectors in our school and deal with that. Thank you. Now we're going to have our concluding question asked by the representative. I'm sorry. My apologies, Ms. Westra. I'm sorry, and Ms. Honey.
I'll be quick.
My apologies. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure that I can elaborate too much on what candidate just said. I personally am not in favor of metal detectors. I went to school with metal detectors. I know what it does to your, to your, to the student's thought process. But what I am in favor of is, I do believe that we have hardened our schools significantly, and of course, it's going to be an evolving process, and not everything can be communicated to the public because our students need to be kept safe, and some of that is going to be, you know, has to be kept quiet. I do believe that we need to invest much more in understanding the, the warning signs, teaching our teachers to be trauma-informed, mental health-aware, investing in social workers so that issues like the Oxford shooting don't develop the way that they do. You know, everything says that that child was, was troubled before the day that he pulled out a gun. So, thank you very much.
Okay, I guess if we get everybody's answer, we have the answer that we need because, you know, the metal detector, if we put that there, we're going to use half of the school day just to pass through the metal detector. So that's not a good option. I love about, you know, the issue about the dogs. It's perfect because students will feel, feel good around the dogs and they can do the job. If we can bring a bunch of dogs, maybe we can pet them and they'll be in good spirits. But another thing that, that you have been saying, look for signs, look for signs, even at the college level, I look at my students, you know, I'm always reading them and chatting with them. Just look for signs, work with them.
Well, I was going to say I would want, I hadn't been to a school with metal detectors, but it sounds from their experiences that it does not work real well. The only thing I've experienced with that is, you know, the airport or, you know, just going through that, and that, that does take a while in jury duty. So as far as the security, it's been a while that I've actually been on the campus. My last one graduated in 2016. I, at that time, when my kids were going through, I, there were concerns, there wasn't as many events happening around the country, but I do think that it's important that if there is a concern, that if a teacher sees a child, it's, it's really hard, I think, to tell these days with kids. There's so many different things going on and with social media and joking about things. It's, it's really hard sometimes to capture that somebody's really upset about something. So I just, I would like to know what the police officers, if they are going to respond, how they're going to respond. I don't have that information. That would be something that I would want to look into and have an opinion to vote or whatever on that, so.
Thank you for answering that question. We are now going to turn the questioning over to our NAACP representative, Mr. Franklin. It's going to be the conclusion of this forum questioning. You will each have two minutes to answer the question. Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Thank you so much to give me two minutes, each person. Before I say anything else, there's a survey that we would definitely like for you to complete. There are QR codes all around for you to take care of that. And in that conclusion with two minutes, this is also a field question, and I'm going to start from my left to right. We go in one, and we know when we're done. I've got a judge next to me. She's making sure I'm on, on the up and up. Please name three strengths of our school district and then three challenges for our district. And then elaborate on why you chose those strengths and those weaknesses. Three. You'd like for me to say it one more time, Anupam? Sure. Please name three strengths, three, and three challenges of our school district, and then elaborate on why you chose these strengths and these weaknesses. That is all.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and give my answer as the other panelists have a little bit more time to jot theirs down. So I hope that the audience gives me a bit of grace because I'm shooting from the hips, folks. So I think the three things that we do well, we have a dynamic community who is committed to the education of our children. I'm talking about every family, every house, every, I moved to Canton because of it. That's one. The second thing is we have an amazing, I think Dr. Marriott calls our teachers and our support staff champions. We have amazing champions in our buildings for our students at every grade level. Are we a perfect district? Absolutely not. But do I believe that every day our teachers, our paraproses, everybody wake up each day coming to serve our children with the best that they have? I absolutely believe that. The second thing is, although there's a lot of room to go as it relates to resource, I've lived in other districts, and this is a very rich district, meaning we have a lot of resources for our kids. And that's one of the reasons why people move into this district. And I think that we need to start talking about what we do well so that we can recapture some of those kids who have left our district. But people have moved to this community for this district, and people will come back to this community for this district. The challenges, you asked for three. It's going to be hard for me to think of three challenges. I think, oh, let me just hit this one. I'll just hit this one with the time that I have. When we look at our district, we do a fantastic job. Our numbers look good, our data look good. We are a high-performing district. We have an international baccalaureate program. That's the same as what you would pay for a Cranbrook or Country Day. We have some amazing programs, but we do have subgroups of kids who are not being provided the same opportunity to grow. And so that would be all three for me if I had time to really unpack it. So thanks for letting me try it out first, everybody.
That was great, by the way, for not being able to write anything down, and as I have my chicken scratch in front of me. Our strengths in this community is a vibrant, diverse community and love being part of that. Another strength is amazing students, staff, and families. The amount of support that we have collectively is unmatched from surrounding school districts that I've been at and districts that I've taught at. And the third wonderful thing about our district is the expansion and the wealth of programs that we have, including IB Academy, STEM Academy, music or arts academy, I mean, you name it, we have it. We recently approved an early-middle-college program that most districts around the county don't have. Our challenges include persistent opportunity gaps, and we see those gaps continue to grow, particularly through the pandemic challenges that we've had. So we need to address those. We also have a challenge of losing enrollment. The biggest reason we're losing kids is low birth rate. So we graduate about 1,500 kids a year. We have about 1,200 elementary kids coming in. So there's low birth rate, and that's impacting every state, just about every state and every district. So in order to recoup some of those, we need to look at opening up, expanding our school of choice program and capturing the families that have left us and families that never chose us to begin with to say, hey, look at what we offer. You never even gave us a chance. We have a lot to offer. And I think we just need to do a better job of doing that outreach. The third challenge we continue to have, and I've seen this over the 25 years in public education, is a disinvestment, particularly in public education funding. We have cut education funding at the state level over the past 10 years, and we're seeing the ramifications of that. We particularly have a challenge with inadequate funding for our special ed kids. We get about 30% of that education cost recovered. So we need to do that more at the state level and at the federal level, but that is a huge challenge that impacts our kids in our community.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I feel we might all have the same, like, three strengths, but I would say our community, our teachers, support staff, all of our people who are working with our students, and of course, our students, I think are our biggest strengths. Now with that, our weakness is growth. So we need to focus on, we're talking about like losing enrollment, our families leaving. It's not just a low birth rate. Like, that's just not like the facts. We can see that other charter schools and private schools around us are increasing enrollment. Closest to us, like I think PCA added 200 students. So if we're struggling with low birth rate, like, why aren't they? It's because our families have left our schools. So we need to grow and we need to get them back. As far as achievement and growth, we can talk about like all of the data, our subgroups are down, but we also have stagnant growth of students who are performing proficiently or exceeding expectations. Like, it's still kind of stagnant. We're not even seeing the growth with that, that we should be. I'm not okay with just saying, oh, it's good because like- I'm not okay with just saying, oh, it's good because like most of our kids are proficient. Like, we need to advance even the ones that are proficient and the ones that are below, get them as high as they can be as well. We also have a staff shortage. We need to draw in not only students, but we want people to work here. And I will tell you, someone who does, it can be a challenge. But because I love where I live and I'm willing to dedicate my time to my, to our kids and my own, and my own children, that I'm willing to work here. But it would be a tough sell to some other people. We're short bus drivers, support workers. We started the year 15 teachers short in like classroom positions. Like, these things can't be happening. And we can't maintain and grow even academics or achieve these other weaknesses that we've already heard about if we don't have people to teach our kids. Thank you.
So I think some of our strengths are the amazing programs that are available in our schools. Some of them have been listed, but how many other districts have a radio station that children can work at? Very, very few. The culinary program where children go right from there to school craft or to actual jobs. We have a nationally-recognized marching band. We have robotics, that is amazing. So we have a lot of really amazing programming. We have an amazing staff and that starts with our parapros, the people in our buildings. Our support staff is great, the teachers are great. We do have a great staff. We also tend to get a lot of community support. The community has supported the bonds. They've supported the Wayne Recent Enhancement Milage, which has really stabilized some of our funding. So we do tend to get some community support. Some of our challenges are, I'm gonna say the biggest challenge we face is the equity. We have a lot of equity issues. Our subgroups are not doing well. There's a disparate impact of school discipline on children of color. Those are things that we have to continue to work on. All of our children need to be and feel safe when they are in our schools. And so our achievement, our subgroups don't do as well. Children with IEPs, children with 504 plans, children who don't speak English as their first language. And then, of course, our budget is also a big concern. We are way, we are behind about $1,200 what it costs to educate a general ed student adequately.
I think the strengths, the three strengths are the community, the students, and the parents. The community fosters an environment of welcoming to all the schools in the system. And I can see a lot of pride in the community for the team sports. And just recently, in the Fall Festival, they had the, all three cheer teams and they, they really supported those groups. The students are fantastic. They're the whole reason we do this. Their drive and their determination to succeed and to be better than our generation and to pave their path in, that's a P, pave their path in history and make their mark on this country. It's incredible. For instance, the, the school paper, they did a fantastic job with the forum last week. And I was just astounded. It was so professional, so well-done and just fantastic. And the parents, they work so hard, they care about their children, they volunteer on school field trips. They, they volunteer at the crosswalks, they're involved, they're engaged, they care about their kids, they care about all the kids in the community. And I'd say our weaknesses are pretty well-tied together. We have academic performance, politics and agendas in the classroom, and enrollment is going down. The first two, I believe, are driving the third. And parents are voting with their feet and they're going elsewhere for their educational needs. Thank you.
I mean, I'm not going to, I agree when it comes to strengths, I agree with every single person here. I'm not gonna repeat exactly what they said. Diversity, our resources, opportunity. As a person, as a person who just graduated not too long ago, I can actually testify to that. For me, the important thing is why are people leaving in such large numbers? I mean, the fact is, last year, we lost over 1,000 families, which is the equivalent of millions of dollars in school funding that we should be getting, but unfortunately, we're not getting. And these people are going to homeschooling, they're going to private schools, which overall are not, compared to PCCS, it's not very good. I mean, you don't have the level of opportunity at PCA that you would have at PSAP. It's just not there. And I've talked with many of these parents. Why are you leaving? Why did you leave? And what can I do to get you to come back? And to be honest, it's not an easy fix. One of the things I have to agree with, though, is, and this is actually the reason why I'm running. Again, once again, students over politics. I have friends who are still in the district and I've talked to them about just what is life like? What's up, what's going on? And one thing that I have, just from talking to so many different people, we have, school, schools should be nonpartisan. Schools should be, schools should be nonpartisan to the, like, overall. I don't think that political parties should be involved in school board elections. And the fact is, unfortunately, they are. I made sure to make it clear that I am not running as a Republican or a Democrat. I'm an independent, wholehearted independent. And I don't think in any case I would get the endorsement of either party if I were to try. But the truth is, when we put politics above students, we end up just ruining the district and people are leaving. And there are, there's currently, right now, I can already tell you this, and this is actually not a attack on my fellow candidates, many of these people I would gladly support on a personal level, but when it comes to politics, if you look in the back, there's a sign with all four names of a slate, of a slate of candidates who are all endorsed by political, by like one political party. I think that we should just have nonpartisan. We shouldn't necessarily have political parties.
Thank you, candidate Elsie Teck, we appreciate you.
I want to say when they put the first, when they added the third high school to the, to the campus, I was kind of worried about that, thinking of all those same-age kids on the same campus. But I have to say that I think one of the strengths is that we do have, provide, can provide a lot of opportunities for a lot of kids, a lot of programs, a lot of activities by having the schools there. My, my, all my kids went from one school to the other and they actually liked it. Even though there was rain and snow, they'd wear shorts in the snow and walk and I'd be going, whoa, crazy. But they, they seemed to like it. And so I think that's a strength. I think that there is a big interest in our community and we do have a lot of resources. I, I, on Sebastian's note, I would like to say that I think a lot of our politics are coming from our unions. I have watched this for all these years. When my first husband ran for school board, we had a man really wanted to vote for him, but said, oh, but my wife's a teacher, I gotta vote for, I have to vote for the other person. So, you know, and so I, I really see that there's, that draws a lot of politics. Politics, when you look to see the things that they support and that gets put into the schools because of that, there's a lot of control in that. I'd like to see teachers be able to pick who they want to represent them. I, I think that as far as the nonpartisan, I think that that's, that's what we all come to and when we do become on the board. I think it becomes a, let's work as a team, let's look at all of our different, our differences and try to make things work. I will say, I have seen a very change in our community as far as divisiveness happening. I feel like people are being labeled all the time as what group you're in, what group you're in. And I, I really think that that has caused a lot more harm to our district. And I've seen it through the years that I've been here. And there was never like, oh, you're this, you're that. It was just, we're part of the team, we're all together here. And I just think that that has really caused a lot of harm in our district. We start needing to think of ourselves as Americans.
Thank you, candidate Picard, we appreciate you.
Okay, I don't know if you know, I am running as a writing candidate. If you need my thing, it's here, okay? But anyhow, and that gave me the opportunity to go from door to door. And you know, I love to talk to people. So I'm talking to a lot of people, including students across the street here at the library. I love these students, they are there. I think, why aren't they playing? They are, here studying. They come with huge backpacks, they go in there and they are studying. And they are telling me, oh, I'm going to the University of Michigan, I'm going to whatever, Michigan State. And I'm so proud of that. That's why we become students, you know, to move on, to be happy with academics. And that's what I want to see if I am in the school board. And by the way, that was something that I had here, the good things, the community, the students are motivated. And challenge, my goodness, we cannot even drive anymore. So many new cars, new buildings, you're going to have so many people near you here that you're going to need to build more schools. I mean it, there are so many people coming to Canton. So be ready for them, that'll be a challenge for sure. And I also have been talking to paraprofessionals. They say, oh, we are working so hard, we need to be recognized. Well, I'm telling you now, okay, you need to recognize them somehow. And people in the cafeteria, sorry, people in the cafeteria, they are saying we are working too hard because we are short in staff. We need to, we need to find a way to correct that, okay?
So, three strengths. Number one, as other people have said, I think are communities and families. It does not matter what the need is, our parents are there. Our parents are in the schools advocating for their children. They are, if a teacher asks for something, they are supplying it. The same is true with our community businesses. I don't think that there is a robotics competition that Jimmy John's and some of the other restaurants have not fed the students. That's just amazing to me. As other people have said, teacher quality and our, the quality of our teachers and support staff is instrumental. That was one of the reasons that we chose Plymouth-Canton Community Schools and that is why we stay here. My children are who they are because of Plymouth-Canton Community Schools and the quality of the staff that they've met here. As others have said also, I think another strength is our size and our programs. As Patty alluded to, what other, what other school district in the area has a radio station that students can learn at? Among other things, all of the academics and academies that we have. As far as challenges, I think that the equitable distribution of resources, especially to many of our subgroups, our minority populations, our, our special needs children, definitely needs to be corrected, needs to be more equitably funded. Yes, there is decreasing enrollment. However, I remember coming into the district when my son was in third grade, when they were doing the last boundary study and looking, tracing it out 10 years and thinking that yes, there was going to be a decrease in population, decrease in student enrollment right about the time my son was in high school. And lo and behold, we're here. Yes, COVID has exacerbated it. The last thing that I think that we have a challenge with is communicating effectively, whether that's good or the negative. I think we have a struggle being transparent and I think that we struggle to communicate the good in the district as well.
I'd like to thank all of you all for being a part of this forum. Few announcements, wanted to tell everyone that there is candidate information at the very back of the room. We ask that at the end of the, at the very conclusion, if you do not pick up the leftover candidate information, it will be discarded as by right and by law. And I would like to turn the microphone over to our partners for their last remarks as well. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Inkster Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, its president Vivian L. Kirkland and our 133 members that serve 33 cities and townships, including Plymouth and Canton, we do appreciate your time on today's date. We do not sit here just as sorority members, but we also have children in our district, one of which is here that plays in that award-winning band at Plymouth High School.
Go brass, go trumpets.
So congratulations to him. We are appreciative of your time today. We are grateful for the community members that are here as well. We appreciate all of your questions. We apologize that we could not get to them all, but we do appreciate your engagement today. I do acknowledge that sometimes the school board candidates are at the bottom of the ballot. So we do encourage you to get to the bottom of the ballot and make this one of your top priorities when you go in to vote in the upcoming election. Thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Coming after that, there's not too much to say. This has been a wonderful experience. Western Wayne County NAACP also stands here. Our mission is definitely to make sure that we have equality and especially trying to erase race-based challenges. And so as, as the second vice president and the education chair, we stand here also with 22 cities and we're here to represent you and your children of all of our ethnicities. And thank you again for coming out.
And our final remarks from Clerk Michael Seegrist, you can lead us out. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And I have to thank Ms. Byrd, Kendra Byrd, from my office for taking my spot as moderator. You did a fantastic job, thank you very much. You know, thank you to everybody who showed up. And one thing that I have seen talked about as a strategy is to start at the back and work your way to the front of the ballot to ensure that you don't forget what's on the back. But again, thank you, everybody. I wanted to, I want to thank our partners. You know, Judge Braxton, you have been an amazing help to my office. We do voter registration drives at the park. And one of the unique challenges of being the clerk and having three high schools in my community is trying to be in three places at one time. And we started coordinating that voter registration drive with the Deltas and it's been fantastic. It's been a great partnership and we couldn't do it without you. And this was her idea to put this forum on. So, you know, thank you very much for everything that we do. You know, and then to the candidates, that is my school district. I went to Hiswister Elementary School, went to Pioneer for Sixth and Seventh, I went to Central Middle School for Eighth Grade, which doesn't exist anymore. But Liberty is beautiful, it's a very beautiful building. And, and then I went to Canton, back when it was called Plymouth-Canton, before they built Plymouth. And, and I, and I served on the school board from 2014 to 2016. I had to leave for this job. And it was a very difficult decision to leave for this job. And I don't miss the school, the long nights. I don't miss the angry emails. Although, being an election official for the last couple of years, those have been, I've been catching up, so that's exciting that this job has kind of turned into that. I graduated from the University of Michigan, is my undergraduate degree. And one of the professors there, her name is Lynn Rivers. Lynn Rivers was a congresswoman who used to represent Canton Township. Lynn Rivers served on the Ann Arbor School District, the Ann Arbor City Council, the Washtenaw County Commission, she was a state representative, a state senator, and served as a congressperson. And somebody in class asked her, what was the worst? And she said, there is only one position I would never do again, and that is school board. I say this so that you understand the gravity of what is before you. I brought to the school board an idea about my vision. And at the time, I was one of the only people who was running, who did not have children at the time. I ran as a product of the school district. And what I found with me is that that meant I, in some situations, could be a neutral voice. But I learned by listening and listening to unexpected people who taught me a lot of things once I opened up my mind. So I'm very excited, we have such a huge field. For those who are running for the partial term, would you be willing to raise your hand? Okay, so we have two candidates for one spot. And then those who are running for the six-year term, would you raise your hands? Okay, so you see the remainder of the candidates, a full field, and there are three, three spots. So you've got a hard choice ahead of you. Thank you, everybody. And thank you for your participation, candidates. It takes a lot of courage to put your name on the ballot. It takes a lot of courage to put your name on the ballot and to sign up to do this job. So, thank you. Thank you, everybody.[1777.11]